Workshop of the Board of Education. Tonight, the Board will receive information from Anaronda County Public Schools staff regarding student discipline and supports. This workshop is open to the public, however, there is no public testimony. This workshop is being broadcast live on AACPSTV, which can be found on Channel 96 on Comcast and BroadStripe and Channel 36 on Verizon. High-definition broadcasts can be seen on Channel 996 on Comcast, Channel 496 on Broadstripe, and Channel 1961 on Verizon. It will also be streamed live on the AACPSTV YouTube channel. Thank you for joining us. Good evening. So unfortunately, Dr. Bedell is not with us tonight. He's recovering from a procedure. So Ms. Jackson is doing double duty tonight in some sense. So I will go ahead and turn it over to you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Tobin. Good evening, President Tobin, Vice President Silkworth, and members of the Board of Education. For the record, I am Monique Jackson, Deputy Superintendent for Student and School Support. I will have my colleague introduce herself.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Dawn Lucarelli, Associate Superintendent for the Office of School Performance.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you all this evening. I would be remiss if I did not recognize this amazing team that's with us tonight. Although Dr. Lucarelli and I are the ones presenting to you, it is really due to their hard work and continual effort that we have our presentation as well as all the supports that you will see embedded within our presentation. In July, last year, the Board requested the workshop related to discipline due to the number of Level 4 and 5 incidents that were occurring in our secondary schools. Last year, and also in July, we indicated that although the overall number of office referrals had declined, we still were concerned about the number of Level 4 and 5 incidents in our schools.
As we are all aware, some of our students and families had difficulty transitioning back to school buildings post-COVID. While we had many structures and programs in place as part of our recovery efforts, some students still struggled academically, social, and emotionally. We recognize that for many of our students, particularly our first graders, our seventh graders, and our 10th graders, they had never entered some of our buildings. And as you're aware, we had additional orientations to help that transition. During the presentation, you'll note that pre-COVID, our numbers of Level 4 and Level 5 code of conduct infractions were improving. However, 2021, 2022, most of our code of conduct infractions, along with the incidence of biased language and behavior, bullying, intimidation, and harassment, rose. This is Level 4 and 5. The next two slides list the policies and regulations that align with this presentation. This first slide represents Level 4 and Level 5 code of conduct infractions. In each case, we saw a drop in incidents in 2019 and 2020 as illustrated by the gray bar. A rise after return in 2021, 2022 is illustrated by the dark blue bar. Our county has a robust website for reporting and collecting data around bullying, intimidation, or harassment. We see similar trends in this data. This slide shows the data for incidents of biased language and behavior from 2017 through 2022. This one is broken out by each level: high school, middle school, elementary, and our Here you see suspensions by student groups for the last four years. Clearly, this shows disproportionality among student groups. Later in the presentation, we'll talk about proactive support to address this. So what supports do we have in place? Let's first look at the definition of discipline. According to Merriam-Webster, the verb means, one, to punish or penalize, or, two, to train or develop by instruction and exercise, especially in self-control. Our philosophy is in alignment with the second definition, a proactive approach that coaches students through making better decisions that keeps them and others safe. The student handbook provides expectations, supports, interventions, and progressive consequences. One aspect of our student handbook is our code of conduct. Anaronda County Public School teachers believe, educators believe, everyone deserves a safe, supportive, and orderly learning environment. Our approach to student coaching is focused on changing behaviors, not punishing students. Our students should be treated equitably when they misbehave, and consequences are based on an ethic of care. Appropriate behaviors are encouraged by coaching, teaching, guiding, directing, and providing opportunities for new learning to occur. Sometimes we call these replacement behaviors. Opportunities for students to practice and succeed in making responsible and effective choices is critical to helping them reach their academic potential and contribute positively towards the school community. Our code of conduct lessons are designed to set high expectations and create strong classroom and school cultures while protecting students' rights and ensuring the rights and responsibilities of all school community stakeholder groups. The code of conduct lessons that are taught within the first two weeks of school set the stage for the school year. This slide depicts the three tiers of our multi-tiered systems of support. Tier 1, or the green tier, represents school-wide interventions. Those things first begin with active engagement and active supervision. Another program you may be familiar with is our PBS program, among other school-wide interventions. Tier 2, or the yellow, represents specialized interventions for learners at risk for academic or social failure due to behavior challenges. These may include check-in, check-out, small group counseling, social skills, restorative justice circles, to name a few. The last tier you see is Tier 3, or red, which represents individualized interventions for students with intensive or chronic behavior challenges. And these include individual therapy, or what's called a functional assessment, so an FBA, Functional Behavior Assessment, where we create a behavior intervention plan, wraparound services, and possibly crisis services as needed, as well as other interventions. Our multi-tiered system of support teams supports schools in identifying the effectiveness of their Tier 1 universal strategies, which typically encompass about 80% of our students. Supports by using the universal screener. The same universal screener is utilized to connect students to the appropriate Tier 2, which is the next about 15%, and Tier 3, which encompasses about 5% of our student On a daily basis, school counselors, school psychologists, social workers support students in developing positive social skills through individual and group counseling. Those students who need more intensive mental health supports are referred to the Expanded School-Based Mental Health Program. They receive therapy in school during school hours. Students also receive lessons on bullying prevention, relationship building through our core school counseling curriculum, and weekly social-emotional learning and wellness lessons. In addition, AACPSTV staff have opportunity to be trained in youth mental health first aid, trauma-informed approaches in the classroom, and mindfulness throughout the school year. Targeted schools have access to a social worker through the Juvenile Justice Therapeutic Crisis Intervention Project. This program aims to support students who are at risk for extended suspension. Students throughout Anaronda County Public Schools, middle and high schools, have an opportunity to get treatment for substance use challenges that they may be experiencing through the Thrive Substance Use Prevention and Intervention Team. Proactive measures around bullying occur at all levels. Systemically, Anaronda County Public Schools will continue to celebrate our Quarterly Unity Day, which happens this Wednesday, that emerged out of our middle school work group. Unity Day is an initiative of the National Bullying Prevention Center, designed to visibly show our commitment to fostering acceptance and inclusion and eliminate hate and bullying. As part of that event, the National Bullying Prevention Center encourages participants to wear orange as a clear indication of our commitment against bullying. Four years ago, after looking at data showing that our reports of bullying were highest at our middle schools, the Middle School Bullying Prevention Work Group was formed. The committee includes both school-based educators, as well as central office staff with input from students as well. The committee was instrumental, as I said before, in establishing our System-Wide Unity Day and the Kindness Cup Challenge, which provides middle school opportunities to engage in activities such as last spring's public service announcement around the contest on being an upstander. The middle school advisory is in its third year and was established to provide more voice to our students at the middle level, and was patterned after the superintendent's teen advisory. Students from across our middle schools provide insights into school-based issues and how we can address their concerns proactively, and they're very happy to share them with us. We have universal, targeted, and intensive interventions at our middle schools as well. Here you see some of the ongoing challenges we have that are outlined before you. Based on our challenges, we have opportunities for growth, as well as future actions we will be taking, so together, we can ensure a safe and supportive learning environment for all our students. Thank you.
So again, thank you for the opportunity to present to you. As a school system that prides itself on teaching and learning, hopefully you saw this evening that we continue to teach replacement behavior and apply appropriate consequences when appropriate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Dr. Lucarelli. Okay, I'm going to offer Board members an opportunity to ask questions. Ms. Shawheim, I believe your light went on first.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate all of your hard work putting this together. So I have some questions around the suspensions by student groups slide in particular. What percentage of our student body are black and Hispanic?
That's a great question. I don't want to give you an off-the-cuff answer, so if you don't mind, I will get that information to you. I don't know by student groups specifically, so I can get that information.
I would love to know what the percentage is relative to white students.
Absolutely, and I'll provide you with each category.
Thank you. And this was the slide that troubled me the most, I have to say. And I guess I have some questions about how we got to this place, knowing, at least in theory, that the percentage of black students is low relative to the percentage. There's fewer black students than there are white students in our county. So what, can you offer some ideas around how, why this is the way it is?
So as you can see, we started out, we know and we've recognized as a school system that we did have a disproportionality issue. We were continuing to put measures in place to reduce the disproportionality, as you see early on. Unfortunately, last year, we had an absolutely hard year for everyone. We know that we had some challenges within communities that spilled over into our schools. We know that, again, these are Level 4 and 5, and so these are really code of conduct-driven suspensions. And so these aren't, I didn't bring a pencil, and so I'm going to be thrown out of class, right? This is fighting. These are things of that nature. And so we had to take a look at the why, right? And so, again, we looked at the why, then we had to dig down another layer, right? So what was the issue? And COVID really exacerbated, and again, not for just our, for one particular community. This data, a lot of this information, a lot of this data is essentially first marking period. Once we were able to stabilize, and it's not to say that the data, things, incidents didn't occur third and fourth marking period, but we began to stabilize a lot more. And so, again, we continue to look this year at continuing to put supports in place for our students that we know are experiencing perhaps trauma at home or are having issues negotiating conflict within the school day. And so those are some of the things, Dr. Lucarelli.
Yeah, I would also add, if you look back at 2018, 2019, you see we, there isn't as much of a gap. And historically, I can tell you that we have had, we've been talking about disproportionality. We have gone out into schools and around that time period, maybe a couple years earlier, we did audits of suspension data to see, went into schools and did audits to see if administrators were being consistent with the same types of infractions, doing things like that pre-COVID. Also, part of our efforts around equity and implicit bias, they're the things that address these kind of issues that we need to continue through equity training that's really critical to making sure that we close this proportionality or this student group gap.
And as you can see, the large spike, so it's not just, it wasn't, so again, we saw the trend going down in the way we wanted to. But then the spike that went up in all of our student groups. Remember, we also didn't have access at the school level to some of the outside supports. So we didn't have, the mentoring groups weren't able to come in because of COVID restrictions. We weren't able to do as many after-school activities, community-based activities, and things of that nature, to really provide additional supports for our students like we had done in previous years and like we have started this school year.
Yeah, I'm really grateful to have this data. I mean, like Dr. Bedell stated, you know, we want to look at the good, the bad, and the ugly, even taking out the 21, 22 school year, there, I mean, it's still staggering the disproportionality. And so, you know, however I can be of help to address that, I don't know how, but, you know, we need to look at consistency, we need to look at, you know, all the things you stated, and making sure that, you know, teachers and administrators feel supported. Because I would love to see this reflect the each, the percentage, match the percentage relative to the whole of, for each group. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I would love to see the day where we really don't have any bars, right? Where we don't, and because then that's where we know that we've reached the point in which our schools are really safe and inclusive, and that our students have learned replacement behaviors, they've learned, you know, not to mimic some of the things that they see in adults. And so that's kind of my ultimate goal.
Right, but until then, you know, if white students are 50%, then they should have probably 50% of the referrals, and if black students are 20%, well, then it should be, it should mimic the demographics in our community. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Dent?
Great question. Your mic. There we go. All right. Great questions, Ms. Shawheim. You actually led right into my question without even asking, without me and you having this collaborative conversation. So my question is really about the suspensions, the length of time for the suspension. So as we were looking at the report, one of the things that I So as we were looking at the report, one of the things that I didn't see was the amount of time. One of the concerns that I have is, even though there are incidents that occur within the school system, the length of time that a person or a student is getting suspended, not only does it impact the person, but their ability to learn, and so many other things that are compounded after that. So in the data that's presented, I didn't see any data points about the length of suspensions. Are you able to provide that data?
We can provide sort of an overview of that data, and we can certainly get some of that information. Suspensions, we have long-term suspensions, we have short-term suspensions. And so what we do, and again, going back to our philosophy, we do exactly what you're saying, Ms. Dent. We try to prevent the student from being out of school as much as possible. We do have some people who don't like that philosophy and think that as soon as a student does something that is, you know, any, any, anywhere out of line, that they should be removed immediately. And so we really do try to take a look at what systems can we put in place to keep the child in school. But when there is such an egregious behavior that they do have to be out of school, we do continue, again, to try to put supports at, at home, continue to do the check and connect with the students. But we can definitely get you that data with the number of days to some degree. And I'll have to figure out what our data team can do for us, and we will get it to you.
Thank you. And then my follow-on question to that is, I think it's on the next slide. It's about the data that goes into the COVID, about how many incidents were. It wasn't broken down, I thought by demographics. I thought it was broken down by the, the months. Maybe I missed, but it's talking about how many incidents that occurred. So COVID started March of 19, right? So by the end of 19.
March of '20.
I'm sorry, March of '20. I did say 19. It's COVID-19, right? So, yeah.
That one, right there. I think I believe that's when you referenced back one.
Yes. So I, that was, that's it, right there. So I, my question is, is that when we went to online and had the online presence, did you see, I would just, I thought it would be lower, but because of that, people do a lot of cyberbullying, right? Your social media bullying, whatever the fancy term, okay, cyberbullying. That's what I would have called it then. Did you see an influx? Because I, I would think that the numbers would have gone down, but it doesn't look, if I take out the months, it looks like they would have been about the same. So did you see any difference in those two?
So if you look at the gray bar, Ms. Dent, and then you look at the, the bar next to it, at the bottom of the graph, that is the, that's the infraction. And you can see, when we were online, totally at home, we went from 255 to 3. In fighting, went down to 4. And possession, you know, you see 4, you see, you see a drop, a dramatic drop, a near, and for other infractions, it's all next to nothing. So that, you absolutely see the clear drop, exactly what you're saying. That's exactly what happened. We saw next to none of the Level 4, Level 5 code of conduct infractions.
And so my question is, with all the mental health stuff, and this is my last question, with all of the mental health stuff that was going on, what I'm concerned about is making sure that we capture what's not seen, right? And so what's not seen is a lot of the cyberbullying, a lot of the things that does happen, the intimidations that happen outside of the school system that ends up getting played out on our playgrounds, right? That we don't see. So part of the disciplinary problems that we encounter or have been encountering, we've tried to resolve them in the school system, but the truth of it is, they happen well before they ever get here. And I think that if we could capture that data, we could put a preventive, and I don't know, this fancy team back there might be like, yeah, 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 we got that, Ms. Dent. But if you do, that's fine. You can say it. But I'm thinking that, how do you put a prevention process in place, right? Is you need to know what's going on before it ever gets to your playground. And I just got to believe that with all the things that are happening, we may not see that creep, scope creep of what was happening, but it doesn't mean that it wasn't happening. It's just we didn't have a plate, a spot, a process in place to capture it. So I would ask that we just, just take a look at that and see if there's some way that we can kind of bring the ugly numbers down that we had for the, when we returned back from COVID. That's all I have. Thank you.
No, thank you, and you're absolutely correct. Post-COVID, we saw some of those mental health issues played out in the schools at the return.
And if you remember, just one more thing about that. If you remember also, that's when we also saw the rise in like violence in our communities. And so our, our students were witnessing that. And remember, they're soulless, list to come and tell an adult. And that mechanism was not exactly fluid. And so hopefully, we'll never, ever have a pandemic again. But in any emergency, that's something that we have learned, is that that fluid connection between a caring adult at the school level and the student at home is, is absolute must.
Yes, and the only reason I'm concerned about that is, is literally because I think if we would have had a process in place when, that, because, you know, I was in school at some point in my life, right? And my teacher was my sounding board. Like, I didn't even realize that I was a child, they was an adult, because I could talk to my teacher. I can tell you every teacher that I had, right? Because I could talk to them, much more than my parents, much more than my friends. And they were that counselor. But we don't have that system in place when we went to COVID, when we went to the online presence. If we look at that data, I think that even though we may not ever have a pandemic, it may help us stop the up, the scope creep when we come back. That's all I'm really trying to get the data for. All right, I'm done. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Silkworth.
Thank you. So I clearly would like to thank each and every one of you for being here this evening, taking your time. And I thank you so much for the presentation. I have a couple of questions, and then in our next round, I'll have some comments. But for now, just a few questions. Good news, great news for me. We have over 84,000-plus students, and we do have some concerns, but most of our students come to school, they do the right thing each and every day, and everybody needs to understand that. So just a couple of questions. You talked about future actions include implementing an action plan developed by the Disproportionality and Discipline Data Committee. And I don't need an answer right now, but I was just wondering what that plan might look like, if you have some idea. If, if you, if you're not ready, that's fine. I just, and I'll give you my other question. You also mentioned the Juvenile Justice Therapeutic Crisis Intervention Project. That kind of tweaked my interest, because I have to tell you, if I'm being honest, I know a good bit about our juvenile justice system. And I think, I think we have a lot of issues in Anaroma County with our juvenile justice system. There's no, in, in my mind, I don't think there's any secret about that. But in any event, I was curious to know a little bit about that therapeutic crisis intervention project.
So for your second question, I'll ask my, one of my colleagues, Mr. Voglan or Dr. Swift, to come forward to answer those question, that question. But to answer your first question about the Disproportionality Committee, and again, the report will be available to the board prior to the public. But it's really essentially looking at the three areas of the school system, the structure, the leadership, and the culture, and taking a look at what changes need to be made and things of that nature. And so again, it's qualitative and quantitative, and we learn the most from our students. And so that's actually been the plus side of that journey. And to answer your second question, for the record, if you two could introduce yourselves, and for our colleagues, and then.
Sure. For the record, Ryan Voglan, Director of Student Services.
For the record, Dr. Allen Swift, Director of Safe and Orderly Schools and Deputy Coordinator of Title IX. Good evening.
So the, the program we're referring to is a partnership that we entered into with the State's Attorney's Office. So they got some grant funding, and they were able to hire a social worker. And we, we met collaboratively to figure out what would be the best way to partner. And, and we came to an understanding that we thought it would be best to target students who were either, who either had an extended suspension or, or may have had the risk factors to have one in the future. So we entered into an MOU with the State's Attorney's Office, and the social worker, we, we identified a few schools, and, and she's reached out. And right now, she's working in Annapolis High School and MacArthur Middle School with the opportunity to expand to a few other middle schools and high schools. It's been really successful. She is a go-getter. And she's our, she came in there, especially at Annapolis, and just hit the ground running and picked up a caseload. So it's been a really, really nice partnership. Yeah.
Thank you. And the other side of the work from Safe and Orderly Schools would have information regarding our House Bill 459 and our responsibility to work with the Department of Juvenile Services and our judicial system. We have students that do come through as transition youth. And so when they do, we, my office and some of the team members, we meet with the Department of Juvenile Services on Mondays. We collaborate with the State's Attorney's Office. We make sure that we are in alignment with minimum age of jurisdiction for the citation. Students receive their intake, their pre-court supervision, their education, them coming through the detention and making sure that we adequately place them, whether it be in the alternative setting for the semester, or if they've come through and we feel confident that they will make it and thrive through the comprehensive program. But there may be some issues of probation and community supervision for students as, as with Ryan and Overlat, because it's a gradual process. We look at our individual student or that targeted child in the Tier 3 lane that may go through a reportable offense, come back through the court system after being on an extended suspension. This is the end game. So Ryan and I were colleagues in the same Division of Student Support, so we lean into each other if, if there are students in crisis. Dawn, in the Office of School Performance, we do have a crisis team as well, and we meet with schools when we see that these issues are creeping up, or we may have information ahead of time to be more proactive with our response for our students.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silkworth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frank.
Yes, thank you. Good to see you, Ms. Jackson.
Hello, great to see you too. Thank you.
Your seats.
I know, I know. Thank you.
I'm there usually.
It's like, where's Walden?
I know, just bounce around. I wanted to check and see, do we have any data from the last 10 to 15 years on suspensions, code of conduct infractions? Do we, do we go back that far?
I definitely know, I don't want to misspeak. So I will find out exactly the number, and we can get that. If you tell me specifically what you would like to see for 10 to 15, I can.
I want to see if we're gradually increasing, if some of the thing, you know, if, if we have some peaks and then they go down, maybe identify what we did in those timeframes that have reduced some of our concerns. I'm just trying to get more of like a, an overall feel.
I'll provide as much as I, as far out as we have.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And then, do you have suspension data by cluster?
We can get that information. Yes, ma'am. We can get that.
I would be interested to see that as well.
Absolutely.
And then, I'm looking at the, the graphs that we have and just some sort of rough, sort of shaky math. Right at the end of the 2019, 2020, we did, we did not have that last marking period. So it looks like that data would have been relative to the year preceding that. Is that more or less accurate?
It's hard to, it's hard to determine that, you know, as, as, as one of our former regional superintendent, you say, hope's not a strategy. But, you know, we really did, we had a lot of great supports that school year, and we were hoping to see that trajectory continue to go down. So it could have been about the same. I don't see, based upon my anecdotal experience that year, I don't see where it would have been a huge leap as far as a lot more than the previous year.
So it might have been starting to reduce a little bit, but we just got cut off before we could finally set. I mean, if, if you have the first three marking periods of the, the years preceding, you know, maybe we could look at that too, to see if we were on a, on a good path. And then, yeah, I guess once we see some of that data, I could kind of maybe form a few other questions.
And that brings up a very good question, as I told both Dr. Tobin and Mr. Silkworth. You know, this doesn't have to be the end of it. I would be more than happy to meet one-on-one with any board member who would like to dig down into the data a little bit more. I plan, you know, if you'd like to, you know, if you get follow-up data and you'd like to talk to me or have a question about something, again, I'm always available, and so I'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, I don't know, you're always, you know, please reach out and let me know. And, and sometimes I don't think until I see it, and then I say, you know, I would really like to compare this to that. So it's, it's a great starting point. I appreciate it. And, you know, I, I don't know that I would have thought to ask that, except for seeing it in, in graph form. So I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I know you all love to spend time with me, and so I'll throw that out there.
Thank you. Ms. Corkadel.
There we go. There's a charm. Thank you, Dr. Tobin. Thank you guys so very much. All very good data. A couple of questions and observations. So I wanted to piggyback just for a second off of Ms. Dent's comments concerning the, the learning loss that occurs during lengthy suspensions, or a student who just is continuously in and out of the suspension cycle with a bunch of brief ones. Have, what, to what extent have we leveraged and perhaps plan to leverage in the future our virtual learning, learning potential? The suspension is designed to give the student a break from the environment to allow the victim their time to breathe and also demonstrate that this is an environment that has rules that must be followed. That being said, our mission of ensuring that that student doesn't fall too far behind and does have those opportunities to catch up, usually experiencing other challenges creating the why the behavior occurs, I would be curious to see how far we could take that, because that, to me, would be a positive constructive. The better they are doing academically, the less likely they're going to be mauling around after school, developing poor habits, and instead be engaged a little more in academia.
You're absolutely on target. We do have a work group that's studying that very thing. And we hope to implement it, hopefully by next school year, with targeted grade levels and support. And it's not just, Mrs. Corkadel, as you know, it's not just about the support that a student gets academically, but that also has to be, the social and emotional support has to be embedded within that as well. And it also has to be appropriate, right? They also have to be able to have the support at home. I know the board members know this, but for those that are viewing, we do also have another alternative program for the short-term suspensions called the ACE Program at the middle school level that we piloted. And it's actually been a great alternative, and I'll speak as a middle school principal, because we knew that our children were going to be safe. We knew they were going to be fed. We knew they were going to have a mentorship. But we also knew that there would not be a break in academics. And so that's something that we would like to continue to replicate. And so we thank you, I guess, two years ago, we did expand it maybe three years ago within our budget. And so we do thank the board for that. And we are looking, continuing to look at alternative means to keep students in the building with the caring professionals that they need to be supported by. But virtual learning is one of those ways. But we also need to make sure that we meet all the criteria from MSCE, COMAR. And so that's why we do have a, a work group taking a look at that.
Sounds very promising. I look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you.
In regard to, my second point or question is, if, if I'm reading this correctly, and we have a greater amount of incidences that are occurring, then we have a greater number of victims on our campuses. So given that, you know, there, there's a lot of pull and tug, we have invested a lot, and as shared, we've invest, we continue to invest a lot from a budget perspective. Our policies continue to, you know, we continue to adapt to try to better address them. Are there other ways that we can, can, or ourselves, the community, be supporting our victims? Or are we looking to expand on some of those resources? Likewise, given the numbers have to be increasing. If you have a, if you have a person who, you know, that did something wrong, there's at the receiving end a victim, so.
And that's, again, another thought-provoking question, Ms. Corkadel, because as we continue to learn more about discipline and really the antecedent of the behavior, we also are reaching out into families and offering support. And so. And so the, the school, the good news is the school has sort of become that epicenter of support. But that also takes a toll and a strain on our resources as a school system and our principals and the teachers and the counselors, all for good, right? But we are looking to help balance that, right? With the support, as you are well aware, people like Dr. Pam Brown. And I think that was one of the things, the positive unintended consequences of COVID was that we got to grow our partnership at the county level. And so now it is a simple email. I have this family that appears to be in crisis and we just come together, just the two of us. She had always been working with Mr. Vogelin and Ms. Egan and their teams. But that continuous level of support with myself and even with Dr. McMahon and her team to get the supports into the community have been really a man's job.
Well, that's that upgrade. I call it the, you know, version two, version five, whatever you want to call it, the old cricket teams. And it is successful. I do think it's also important for us to continue to have that higher level look as well. So it sounds like we are keeping that connection. That's all great. And then lastly, we're starting to get some data from the state. We saw some previews at our conference at MAB. I actually have pulled up on my screen our poverty map for Anna Rundell. They released all the poverty maps for the county. And I know that the state is starting to overlay some of this data as it relates to student discipline. We're having continued conversations about new state legislation as it relates to how we receive information about reporting of juvenile criminal instances that are referenced, particularly like in HB four, five, nine and then a couple of other places. Are we at the local level? Are we dependent on the state for some of that data? Or are we able to start to kind of piece together some of, to increase our ability to more efficiently target our resources? Because if I have that and I have like another map that shows my English language learner communities typically, you know, I mean, like there are different ways of approaching it. But it seems like our programs are designed to embrace that data. Could you expand a little bit more on how we're putting this data together? And then what that means to us?
Absolutely. And Dr. Lucarelli can expand on the, at the school level. I know at central office level and at the school level, you know, being a former principal, as was Dr. Lucarelli, we do have regular team meetings, whether it be our leadership team that take that data and, and, and take a look at it at the school level to figure out what supports, again, it's about students, it's about the individual families that a student or their family needs. And then what we've done a better job of over the last five years is that vertical team aspect within a cluster or a region, expanding the number of regionals so that they can really be focused on some of our areas that have had some trouble over the last five years. And so Mr. Vogelin, as well as Ms. Egan and Ms. Swift, or Dr. Swift and their entire team really come together. Ms. Egan has, and I'm going to get the name wrong, but Monday morning meetings in which she really brings all of those, all of, all of those direct reports together to sort of come to, gather to figure out, okay, is it a health problem? We even have Ms. Karen Siska Creel come in on Monday mornings to represent our health department. So is it something that we can attack at the community level? And so we are having those collaborative conversations regularly, looking at the data. I will tell you that, and I said this before, those people behind me are an absolutely amazing team for so many reasons. But I don't know how much they sleep, right? Not, they don't get as much, they don't stay awake as much as Mr. Mosher. But, but they are, you know, if you were to take a look at their calendar and I try to get on their calendars, they're, I'm going to meet with this team in the county and I'm going to meet with this team and this team. And so they're constantly meeting with people, trying to pull in resources by doing that, what you're saying, Ms. Corkedel, looking at the school level data and the, at the child. And, and Dr. Lucarelli can sort of talk to you about what goes on at the school level.
To that point, at the school level, just one, I'm just going to explain one process. We call this CDM or the Collaborative Decision Making Model. And that's really where groups of students, groups of teachers wrap their, their arms around students that are brought to them. And it is a multidisciplinary team at different levels. It looks different depending on, you know, the students. And they bring students, just as you're saying, and then there's a deeper dive. And if there's additional information, that gives teachers like, maybe a student is doing this class and they're not doing very well in this class. There's, person seems to need supports here and it's an opportunity to collaborate around the data points. And then even what we are calling street level data, like from the students, from talking to the students, talking to the parents, talking to the kids, as many people to come up with a plan for that student. So that's just, that, just wanted to provide one example of how it plays out at the schoolhouse. And there are teams that come in and support our schools on how to run that process effectively. And it's their resource, people that come in to support our schools that need additional help in running that process more efficiently for our students.
So just as a follow-up, and then I'll wrap up for the members, is, so I know when we did like some of the older preventive, you know, pre-COVID preventative measurements and stuff, we always got that magical map. And you could take that map of the overdoses. You could take the map of certain level and tiers of crime. And you could take that map also and overlay it. And it's probably looking a lot like this, you know, where the reds and the oranges are. And I'm wondering, you know, I, I think what I don't like about those maps is it creates a stigma and it also can create a disparity as opposed to an opportunity for a community. So I know that how we deliver the data to the community is important because that's how the students create, have the opportunity where otherwise they don't see. Otherwise, we're shrouding it from them. So I'll be curious to see how, how we tool some of this data in the coming, you know, years ahead. And, and like Ms. Frank said, understanding the clusters, how it relates to our budget, definitely critical. But I don't want us in that position where, you know, it used to be, oh, and here's, you know, here, here's OD road and here is, you know. We all know there's certain areas that have tendencies towards it, but we don't want to get into that. Turn the identification data into a label or something to that effect.
Absolutely. And in, in our future actions, when we're already partnering with many communities to support families in the community, we can, we plan on continuing to extend those efforts around exactly what you're saying for those communities.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath?
Thank you. It was a great presentation. I was just wondering, the student wellness block and like homeroom, I think it's a great tool. I was just wondering if the school system had anything in place to ensure the efficacy of that, to make sure like students are paying attention, that's being dispersed to all students. I was just a bit interested in that.
Just like with mathematics class or science or social studies, we do have walkthrough tools. We do collect data. And I'm so glad that you brought that up, Mr. McGrath, because I remember about three years ago, sitting at a board meeting and there was concern about the wellness block. And should we, is it really necessary and should we get rid of it? And I said, hey, let's give it a few years and let's just, because it's sort of like peas and carrots, right? My children don't understand the benefit of eating peas and carrots every single week or, or, you know, eating green vegetables every single week, right? And so they just have to give it a little bit of time. And, and I remember, and I smile when I say that because it was, Ms. Jackson, I think you really need to look at that. And now we're really seeing, and I appreciate you saying from the student perspective that you see the benefit of it. But it's only as good as the implementation and you're absolutely correct. And so that's really our next level is to take a look at, again, walkthrough tools, participating. When we visit schools, you will see us participate during that wellness block because we want to see exactly what's going on. So thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. And yes, to add to that, I, I think I've mentioned to you, I visited Annapolis High a couple of weeks ago and had a presentation on their wellness program. And they have a wellness coordinator, which I know not all schools do. But that also brings me to another question I had, which is, you referenced, Ms. Jackson, that last year we had a higher number of incidents in the first part of the year and things started to get better and that there were supports in place. So I wonder if you might say a little more about some of the supports you did put in place, but also how you're monitoring, and this is to some extent like Mr. McGrath's question, you know, how you're figuring out if, if, if these supports are helping, where we, we hope they will.
One of the things that we did was we took a look at the student schedule and the student day to figure out how to best support them academically. And then during different blocks of the day, giving them the opportunity to, if they needed to get help, because that was a huge source of stress, right? And so when you, when they came back into in-person instruction and they felt like that, or students felt like they were struggling, they needed to get help. And so the structure of the student day. Again, thank you to this amazing team behind me, putting structures in place that helped with the therapeutic supports during the day. And then something as simple as telling the students that these things were in place because we told the parents, but informing the actual students. And so Mr. McGrath can probably attest to it. When you open up your Chromebook and you're on the splash, splash page, there you can see some supports that are on the splash page that the students themselves can take advantage of. We also asked the principals to do a better job of advertising some of the supports. We added more adults into some buildings. We, we were able to, at Central Office, again, have a culture of, you needed to be in schools. You needed to be in schools supporting. You needed to be in schools monitoring and you needed to be in schools observing. And so that's really what a lot of our senior staff, especially at Central Office, have been doing just to that fact of monitoring. We want to get, we want to take a look at the end of the first marking period. We believe this year will give us some really good data to see exactly whether or not, you know, we know that there are, you know, COVID's still around. We know that there's some mental health challenges, but we weren't where we are a year, we're, we, we are not where we were a year ago. And so we feel like we're at a better area of recognition of where students are, again, socially, emotionally and academically. And so that end of the first marking period, and as you know, Dr. Peddell has really been pushing us to take a look at, at that data. And so we're going to take a look at a lot of those data points. And then finally, again, the rise of student voice. We have, again, thank you to Mr. Treffer and his team. We have the middle school advisory. And if you've not been around a middle schooler recently, they will tell you exactly how they feel about everything. And so they've given us lots of great feedback and as well as high school advisory and just really any opportunity. And so then the blueprint has also offered us an opportunity to take a look at the way we are staffing schools, different staffing models. And, and that's also been helpful in our journey. And then finally, thank you to, again, the Student Services and Student Support Services team. We were able to, and this, and this board, we were able to begin our first elementary therapeutic school setting. And we hope that as we build those blocks, and again, that's not data we're going to get at the end of first marking period or even at the end of the school year. But as we build the blocks from elementary and then elementary to middle and then middle to high school, we will see that reduction. So that's going to take a few years. And so, but, but we'll continue to put supports starting at the elementary level.
So that'll sort of be a longitudinal
Absolutely.
study of that. And yes, I agree. We, we, this board may not be around when, when some of that comes out, but that would be interesting to see. Because as you're, you're right, that is what the blueprint is aiming at, is to sort of move everything early. I was also thinking, as you were discussing the various supports, especially when Dr. Lucarelli was talking about what goes into tier one supports, for example. And I was struck, I was at the presentation that Dr. Brown gave last Friday on her latest edition of the Poverty Admits Plenty report. And one of the many interesting pieces of data there was a recognition that as a county, we really are behind in how many medical providers we have and mental health providers we have. And so I'm wondering, first of all, how, you know, how, how we're wrestling with that. And along with that, you know, one thing that came out of COVID was telehealth, right? Tele, and, and how accessible is that for a student in the course of the school day who has a therapist, maybe not a school therapist, somebody else? You know, are they able to accommodate those telehealth sessions if, if that's the only place that therapist can fit them in or something like that? So that's, that's a bunch of questions.
Right. So answer your second question or your last question first. That's something that we continue to work with as a school system. We don't have a solid answer to that right now because again, telehealth is a fairly recent phenomenon, especially with our younger students. And so we're looking at balancing that day-to-day support with the students and that, the support that we give them in the school system with that support that's, that is provided as a part of something that they do with their family. And it's not a part of their regular IP, et cetera. You are absolutely correct that telehealth for the family has been a benefit for the entire school system. And I'm very, very appreciative of our providers that have opened that door, especially in the evening, because that's been really, really beneficial. And then your first question, I forgot.
The number of providers we have.
Oh, yes.
We're low in the county.
Absolutely. And Mr. Vogelin, would you like to come and talk a little bit about, as you all know, Mr. Vogelin is part of, is the co-chair of the Countywide Mental Health Task Force and which you all will be getting an update in several months on the task force. But I thought Mr. Vogelin could just provide a short overview of some of the things they've been working on. And then.
So you asked about just providers?
Well, I, I was just struck that we're, there's a dearth of providers in the county from what I, from what I've heard. It's hard to find one and.
Yeah. So from a school perspective, just speaking about student services staff, you know, when you look around the state and the hiring issues we're having, school counseling, school psychology, school social worker shortage areas as well. But we have, we're fully staffed. School psychologists are fully staffed. School social workers are fully staffed. And we have about four vacancies for school counseling as compared to some of our other counties around us that have a lot more than that. So I feel good about where we are from a school system in terms of our mental health supports and staffing. And those schools that we have some vacancies with school counseling, we're figuring out sub, sub-coverage or making sure that a social worker's there, a psych's there. So we, we're doing a good job of that. We also have our expanded school-based mental health, which has our five partner agencies. And they are experiencing the same issues around finding social workers, licensed social workers. So yeah, some of them are struggling for sure with clinicians. And they've been struggling for the last probably three years on that. But we do, I mean, I feel like we do have a pretty robust number of clinicians in, in our schools. I would say, I would say about 10 of our schools are without, like don't participate in the expanded school-based mental health. So about 120 of our schools do and that program's expanded a lot. So we do have a lot of, and then, and we've also expanded that with grant funds. Now we have students that weren't able to get access to it before with insurance issues, now can have access to it. So we're breaking down some of those barriers also. So, so. But, but like you said, outside the system and, and with our expanded school-based mental health, there's definitely a shortage of clinicians, just like teachers. And there's not, just like the teacher pipeline, the social work and counseling pipeline is not as, is not, is not seem to meet the demand that we have or we will have.
And I simply was going to say some of what Ryan said, but also to share and give thanks to the budget process because we've been able to expand our programs, our school-based support to Mr. Vogelin's point. So thank you for that because we have been able to, for the most part, fill those positions.
I think that's part of the shortage in a lot of counties because a lot of counties expanded, right? And so there weren't enough counselors to fill all those different counties where they got budget increase or position increases. So, so yeah, the, we got. So, so yeah, we got, we got the positions out, finding the people, so.
Yeah.
But we appreciate, definitely appreciate those positions.
Well, that brings me to my last question. So first of all, thank you for this presentation and for the work that went into the presentation and for the work that you do that is behind the presentation. What do you need if you, you know, if you could make the world the way you want, what do you need?
So I have to turn my phone off so these people behind me don't text me.
I love my phone, man.
We, and I'm sure once we leave, and Dr. Lucarelli can fill in the blanks, I mean, I'm sure once I leave here, I'll say, oh, that was a better answer. But we need continued support for the work. And I'm not just talking about financial support. As Dr. Bedell has said, you know, there's a lot in here that we are not proud of, right? Now, 2,113 physical fight, that doesn't necessarily mean 201,013 people, it's instances. And so it could be two, or, or four, or five. But it's, it's a representation of the work that we still have to do. And whether it be from, like I said, this amazing team, it's my team, right? Yes, everybody back there is my team. My amazing team behind me, or, you know, our students. Our students have really been the forerunners in all this. And our, our teachers have done a wonderful job. They've had to come back post-COVID, they've had to teach curriculum, they've had to ensure that, you know, ancillary needs are met. And our principals, our principals and our other unit staff members, our assistant principals. So it really takes that continued support. We will be putting things towards, in the budget, such as assistant principals at all levels. Again, because if we're talking about this whole idea of elementary support, when you have a principal that's in his or her office helping a child in crisis, then we want them, someone else to be able to go out into the classrooms and monitor the wellness block or monitor instruction or talk to a parent who may be upset. And, you know, sometimes our students in crisis, or sometimes our students who are experiencing significant behavioral challenges do take a lot of time. And so that's probably one of the things. We'll continue to ask for the appropriate number of professional school counselors and, and staff. And again, Mr. Vogel has taken a look at that cost benefits analysis, right? Would we love to have 80 counselors, more counselors? Absolutely. Would we be able to find 80 counselors? No, not at all. And so we take a look at that. And so we put forth an appropriate budget. So, you know, again, we'll look at the budget, but then the support. Again, we do have a very robust alternative education program under Mr. Crane's leadership, but we're going to continue to expand that. And then the, the work that Dr. Gillens has done over the last few years has just been remarkable. And so we want to continue to uplift that work, because that too will make a difference in how the outcomes for our students. And then again, under, you know, Ms. Egan, Dr. Swift, and Mr. Vogel, we'll continue to look at unique ways to support our students, and we will need help with that. And then finally, with Mr. Treffer and the Office of School performance, we'll continue to monitor that and make adjustments as, as needed. So Dr. Lucarelli, is there?
I won't give my wish list right now. I will say that the most important thing is the schoolhouse and what happens day-to-day and how we support our teachers and make sure they have the resources and supports that they need, which includes adequate coverage in our classrooms, which are extended day subs and the things that we've put in place as we come back are really critical for us to maintain at the Esther Cliff, because if we cannot supervise students, that makes it a bit more challenging, which is why Ms. Jackson brought up APs. Some of our schools, she said, if a principal goes out, there is no supervision for the rest of the school. Someone else has to step up, and sometimes it's the literacy specialist or the counselor, quite frankly, that have to become the teacher in charge in those situations. So my wish, my wish list from the Office of School Performance would be that, along with all the other things that, that we need, and we've realized that priority, we have to also prioritize.
Absolutely.
So just want to say that. But, but what we're asking as a system is just support at home with students and talking to your students about the importance. And it can't be oversaid, just to be kind to each other and listen more carefully to each other and be patient with you. We say it, but it's really important. I see it in my own household, that we model that for our students as hard as it is, so that when they come to school, you, and it's funny, because you, you hear kids and you're like, you can tell someone has, has taught them those things, that they're, that they're saying or how to, how to deal with those situations. So we, I just ask, we appreciate any help from the community, that you can work with students to make sure they continue to be, come to school ready and, yeah, and continue to report anything that needs to be reported. That's really important, that we know what's going on and to report something if you see something. And if you're having trouble, there are things to report. So we encourage our, our young, our students to do that.
Any additional comments, Mr. Silkworth?
Thank you. And I've prepared some comments. I'll try to be as brief as I can, but this is important to me. My comments are framed to be informative, helpful, not confrontational, and food for thought in support of all efforts to elevate our great students and staff. If you disagree, that's great. Let me know why, help me to understand, so I can be supportive. As I said, this is food for thought. The mental health and social emotional supports must always be at the forefront of our discipline strategies. And the teacher in me is coming out. If there are any teachers out there, younger, inexperienced, or older, whatever, this statement is for you. Discipline becomes less of a problem when positive relationships are built with students based on trust, respect, and caring. If I didn't say anything else, that would have been enough. But I do have other things to say. The goal of discipline is to change behavior. We have many successes throughout each day, every, all of the time. However, we do have some failures. We have what I think to be a great code of conduct, but for whatever reason, consistency is missing in the application of discipline in some areas, in some schools, at some times. Many of our staff have the perception, which would be their reality, that there are no consequences for negative behavior in our schools. I'm just putting that out there. Discipline or professional development, when it comes to discipline, is key. Training for our staff is always an important piece. The importance of consequences, however, in matters of discipline, in my mind, really need to be a part of that training. I'm not referring to punishment, I'm referring to practices, strategies, and experiences which will help each individual student realize the importance and the value of a positive change in behavior. That consistency, I think, is really very important. And I've been in the schools a few years, so I know a little bit more, for instance, DMR. Many of our schools have a decision-making room. This should be a place where a student can be assigned to get help with work in a classroom as well as help to deal with issues outside of the classroom. It is not a place to be given candy, sweets, and to chew the fat with friends and peers and adults. I've seen it function perfectly, and I know as well that it is a disaster in some schools. We must do a better job with the creation, staffing, and implementation of the DMR. Frustration, I would be remiss if I did not say that there appears to be some frustration about the process of discipline in some of our schools. Some students, teachers, parents, and admin staff all seem to have some level of frustration. I think this can be eliminated to some degree by applying our code of conduct in a fair and equitable manner with a focus on changing the behavior. Fighting in schools, I've broken up many fights. Why do students fight in schools? Well, over the years, I've come to believe that some students feel that it's okay to fight in schools because of the lack of real consequences and because they know that ultimately someone's going to break up that fight. And for them, it's safer to fight in schools, as opposed to fighting out in the community. Large numbers of the fights, I believe, are a result of the inability of our students to deal with social issues and, guess what, relationships. And so we need to provide services and help to these students so that they, they can cope. PBIS, we have some PBIS schools, which, and a lot of effort goes into that, and I think that is absolutely marvelous. Some people believe strongly in the value of PBIS. I will tell you, however, there are some students who question PBIS as a strategy, simply because it seems that they're being rewarded for things that isn't an expectation anyway. Many staff at many schools have worked very hard to implement PBIS, and I certainly congratulate and thank them for that. Restorative practices, no, no news for me, this is no change. I've expressed this for a long time. Restorative practices, when implemented appropriately by well-trained staff, may make or will make a difference. However, the fundamental concern for me is still the lack of consequences, and training is a critical issue there. Restorative practices will work when the staff are very well-trained to do that. In my mind, it's one tool in our bag of tricks to be used when appropriate and when conducted by a very well and trained staff. And so those are just a few thoughts that I had. I hope it's some food for thought. I'm going to repeat that first one, because I believe, to me, it's so important. Discipline becomes less of a problem when positive relationships are built with students based on trust, respect, and caring. My final thought would be, we are so proud to have Dr. Bedell, a new superintendent, and I've had some talks with him about his philosophy of discipline. I think we all need to continue to have those discussions. And I said earlier, the great news, 99.999% of our kids come to our schools and do great things every single day. Those that do not, we cannot throw them under the rug. We have to, we don't have alternative settings like some of our schools, neighboring schools might have. We have to come up with strategies and, and help for, for those students and their families. So once again, thank you to all of you for being here this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Silkworth. Mr. McGrath?
Oh, I just wanted to talk really quickly about, Mrs. Jackson earlier talked about the new opportunities in schools for students to get help in the day for like academics. I just wanted to say personally, that has worked wonders, especially for my physics grade last year, shout out to Mr. Whitmer. But I do want to say that is, that was just such a great initiative, and I think similar initiatives would be great, just like, definitely whoever, the group that came up with that, give them a raise. No. It was great. I know a lot of students who struggled with academics in previous years, who might not be able to go to school after school to redo a test. It's done a lot, and this is just my personal, this is totally just like my personal experience and the experience of my friends. Students who would lash out usually because they were in, they were in a cycle of poor grades and poor academic achievement, being able to have a time in the school day to go redo a test or get academic help with a teacher did so, so much. So I think it was just a great initiative overall.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Thank you. I think next was Ms. Frank.
Thank you. Mr. Silkworth was definitely preaching to the choir on the side of the dais over here. One thing that you mentioned was fascinating to me, and I had never considered it. So I just wanted to reiterate one point that you made that, that I just found very interesting, that some students may believe that it is safer to fight in schools because it will be broken up. I had never considered that, and I guess that 49 years of experience is certainly kicking in some of these, these viewpoints, and I appreciate that tremendously.
And I will tell you, that really is true, I think, I think you understand that. But I would much rather break up a fight with guys than with the girls. I have broken up many.
Luckily, my kids are still tiny, so I break them up easily.
There will come a day.
There were a few things that you mentioned that I, that I do want to incorporate into some of the thoughts that I had, and I think that you and I are definitely on the same page. So I'm glad that you articulated some of those concerns. You mentioned PBIS, you mentioned restorative practices. And, and one of the reasons I was asking for cumulative data over a long period of time is because a lot of what we've done in the last couple of years have been fairly recent. So one thing that I really appreciate about Dr. Bedell is his willingness to try things and understanding that those things may fail, but also the assurance that if they do, we will try again, and I support this ethos tremendously. As we go down this path of discussing discipline and we look at the definitions that we use for discipline, not my particular definition in my household, but I'm a very strong disciplinarian. It's, it's definitely different than what many of us recall. I think I'm second youngest on this board. And, and even in the, the gap between my educational experience and what I see today, there are differences in the mentality of discipline. And are those initiatives working? Is this mentality working? And are we willing to evaluate that? Are we seeing more success in our students based on the way that we frame our discussions around discipline? And if we're not, when do we change course on that? When do we decide that perhaps what we did worked better back in the day? Or, or maybe we have never gotten it right, and we need to go back to the drawing board? So I just say that because while we can, we can look at the data and say there's certainly a clear indicator that COVID changed a lot of things about discipline, maybe that means that now is the time with, with these spikes that we have to sort of start anew. So I would just be interested in some of the, the suggestions that Mr. Silkworth made for sure, and then just maybe reimagine this. Maybe this is sort of the time to reimagine how we do things. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Ms. Dent was next.
So two things. Mine's just not a comment, it's more of a request for data. So when I look at the, just, just discharge, it's, it's all of them together, I just look back at them. But I heard you say, Ms. Jackson, that, we'll just say 817s and keep on picking on the fights, right? Let's talk about the drug possession. So that number like blows my mind, because the next thing I think about is how many students, and you said at school, why, that's a lot of possessions that you just caught, wasn't saying that that's all that's there. So when you said earlier that these is not necessarily individuals, they're incident. So the same person may have done something twice.
Correct.
Okay. So when you start breaking down data, right, I need true pictures of what's happening. So if I just look at the demographics, if you go back to the color, race demographics, there. So if I just look at the incidence, I would say, okay, by this data, it appears, right, that more African-American students get in trouble than white students, where if, is that, is there, is that not true? I don't know. So I would like to see a little bit more definitive data before I make any recommendations to say, do I have a problem or do I really not have a problem? Because I can't, me personally, I can't define that, right? That's one. The second one is, is that positive intervention controls go beyond just having mental health counseling, right? Just having people that are there. It's a lot of weapons getting into our school system. It's a lot of weapons that are getting into our school system that get caught. So when I look at prevention methodologies, yes, we have the resource officers, but what other things could we put in place? I, I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to have you do that work, right? What other place can, things can we put in place as a prevention to prevent things like weapons? I, I put down here weapons control process. How do we figure out how to get weapons out of our school system? One of those things is, you know, active, you know, what a little thing is when you scan through at the airport?
Winding, yeah.
Yeah. Like, so people get all excited about, you know, ooh, don't do that. But you do it every time you walk through the airport, right? But you do it every time you walk through the airport, right? So what I'm saying is, and I'm not asking you to be evasive, what I'm saying is, think out of the box of how do we put interventions in place so that we don't have this thing, right? One of the things that we have to be mindful is how do we keep children, students out of trouble, right? We know they're going to get in trouble, but how do we keep them out of trouble? Because once the infraction go beyond what we can control, it becomes criminal. And then that becomes the cycle of juveniles going into the system, right? So how do we prevent that? And then my other one is closely tracking the suspensions as it relates to the incidents. This is talking about suspensions by group, not necessarily incidents by groups. So the way the data is for me, it just kind of gets a little bit skewed. So I don't want you to have to do a lot of work. What I'm asking is, is give me a comparative analysis of, or you may know it. Look like Dr. Lucarelli, you're almost like, I got it already. But what I'm saying is, is that the suspensions, the demographics of the suspensions, and then I see another spot over here that says the incidents, and then no demographics of the incidents, and then how do that all intertwine? It looks like it's a lot, right? Looks like it's a high percentage, but is it really? So I would just ask if we could just take a look at that data. And then my final comment is that discipline is hard. It is. You have to make a decision. Every principal got to decide whether they got it, and you have 126 of them, Ms. Jackson. No, I don't want to be in your shoes. But every last one of those incidents require you and your teams, I don't even want to say effort, but you got to take a look at it, and you got to make a hard decision on defining which direction this is going, trajectory is going to send that child on, right, or that student on. And forgive me for all the students out there, I keep saying child. I'll get that later on, that I should stop saying that. But I do think that we have an opportunity that if funds are needed for us to change that way, we can get that, because we're coming out of an era to where discipline and behavior are start, people are actually starting to look at how does those two affect it? But one of the things that's happening in my district is poverty. So poverty, discipline, and behavior, all, if I look at every last one of those things, I think that I could try to come up with a way to do a prevention plan that would help everybody, but I can't see the data right now as it is. So I really do want to try to find a preventive process, but I really need good data that I can go into, that I can say, hey, here's a great idea. And I don't know if that is true or not. So thank you, thank you for everything. You guys are doing a remarkable job. I do not want to ever be in those shoes. I seriously say that, because it just makes me cringe when I find out a student's getting ready to be suspended for 30 months, 30, I mean, 30 weeks. It's like, oh my God, what will they do? So I don't, I appreciate what you're doing, and so thank you very much, seriously. And from all of the parents that probably won't ever say it, is that we know that your job is hard, and we know that it's hard for us to discipline our own children, and just imagine student after student after student. So thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Ms. Shawheim.
I mostly just wanted to say thank you again for all of your hard work and efforts every day for our students. Yes, some of this data isn't what we want necessarily, but our actions to this point and the ones that are yet to come all will help. I think there's a lot of things that were put in place over the time that I've been on the board that have been fantastic, and I want to acknowledge that. And yes, we have someone new at the helm with a different set of ideas, but that doesn't mean that what we were doing before wasn't great, because it was and it continues to be and it continues to contribute to that. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And, yeah, I don't think we should be scared to look at all of it going forward and to sit with that data and how that makes us feel and how we want to move forward and make it better for all of our students. And so I'm willing and able to sit with that and to contribute in any way that I can. And I just, I would love to see it at least reflect the demographics in our community a little bit better. And then I love our partnerships with the various groups in the community, and I know that those relationships are, took a long time to cultivate and are in place now and or are yet to be discovered, and they're all fabulous, because, you know, it takes a village, we're not just on an island by ourselves. It's us and the county and the various nonprofits and the various supports around that all help make our kids, help our kids become, you know, successful, productive adults one day. So, yeah, thank you so much for all of your efforts. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you to all my colleagues. I just have a couple of last thoughts. One is around some of the methods that we use now. Obviously, restorative work is a critical part. I do find that doing restorative work with fidelity is very, very hard. School systems tend to be very good at implementing programs. Restorative is not, restorative justice is not a program. And so the depth, and Mr. Silkworth referred to this, the depth of training that goes into that, I think, is critical. And so, and I also think sometimes restorative justice gets kind of mushed up with PBIS, and they're not the same thing. And so I do think as we're looking, as my colleagues have mentioned, sort of really looking at what we're doing and how it's working, that fidelity is something we, I'm sure you are focused on and we want to continue to be focused on, because I think the truth is, those are all built on a more complex idea of what it takes to help young people, students who are, at the beginning, young children, growing into older adolescents, develop as whole human beings. And I think the, many things are not what we thought we experienced as children. And that goes for academic work. You know, I routinely hear some parents say, well, why does my kid get to do, take a test again, right? Well, as a college professor or former college professor, I can say to them, well, what they're learning when they do that is what it means to learn, not just to pass a test, right? And so, you know, these are complex things, and measuring them is complex. And so I'm sure you will keep at that. So thank you for everything that you're doing. I know it's an ongoing task. And I think certainly Dr. Bedell has been referenced tonight is keen on making sure that we see the data. I think this has been very useful for us as a board. And we do, we want to see it all. We're grateful for seeing it all, because that's how we know where we can help and what's needed. So thank you for being willing to do the work to get us all of this tonight. It's been tremendously helpful. I now know that the bar for sleeplessness is Mr. Mosher, so I also learned that tonight.
And Dr. Tobin, along those lines, I thanked Dr. Lucarelli and my amazing team behind me, but also Mr. Mosher and Ms. Houck and his team. You know, this is not my area, right? Like the graphic design, and so thank you so much.
Well, it was very nicely done, and yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming out on this rainy night and spending some time with us. And everyone have a good evening, and some of you, we will see you again on Wednesday. So, good night, everyone.
Thank you.